Tell me your other comment.
Good morning, I'm Mr. Robert Vog and Lake County resident. Before you folks before talk about the airport. I said in the last meeting that you folks were the only seven people that would believe there's able to get seventy-five hundred gallons of fuel on a thousand gallon fuel tank. I wondered if you folks, as you looked at me, could believe that I was believing that. But I don't, no. I had for you this morning a copy of FOIA documents, documents I received from the county. And this one is, the top sheet here is the documents submitted to the Division of Aeronautics in Springfield. This is the grant application. Front page, this is, talks about consideration for a ten thousand gallon tank. The back page of the first, this is what we're looking at right here, this is, has a number of statements on it. What I thought I'd do is I would just read some of this so that, so that we're clear on where I'm coming from. Detailed project justification description. The based users regularly use all jet A fuel in the existing one thousand gallon tank, and are forced to purchase fuel elsewhere. Now, a little further down, PRG, which is the identifier for Harris Airport, and it's highlighted there. PRG has thirty-five based aircraft. Now, I've already said two things. First, they're saying they have a thousand gallon fuel tank, which they do not. And they say they have thirty-five based aircraft, including all hangar space and tie-down areas, they do not. They have eight aircraft on the waiting list, and a FOIA request for that information came back, there is no list. There was also the fuel sales claim of twenty-five hundred gallons of jet A and three thousand gallons of one hundred low lead, which, those numbers have never been attained. And there just are a number of statements, and I thought you folks would benefit with a copy of this, and I'll give you here, Carl, just a copy. It's pretty good. Sorry, thank you. So, that's where I'm coming from, is this is, this is the application that was sent to Division Aeronautics. This is the claim by the county, by Jimmy Wells, that yes, we only have a thousand gallon tank, we've got thirty-five airplanes, we've got eight on the waiting list, all that's just, just, oh, it's not correct. Now, hey, you take the thirty, the number thirty-five airplanes, and use the mathematical calculation, which means you are declaring, you have thirty-five airplanes in the airport, come up with a need of sixteen hundred square yards, and you've got three thousand, so there's thirty-eight hundred square yards of concrete, about four hundred thousand dollars worth. I included the complete application for your use, but if you flip back a little bit, I've got copies of signed delivery tickets for jet A fuel, fuel that was delivered to the airport twelve months before, and twelve months after the application was submitted. They show that your airport manager signed for fuel in excess of a thousand gallons. And Dave Bristow was one of the signatories on that. In addition to that, the last few pages are from your fuel supplier. I have four years' worth of fuel receipts from your supplier demonstrating that they did in fact for four years deliver more than a thousand gallons of jet A fuel each delivery. And I did only ask for four years' worth of fuel records when I completed this FOIA, so I could've went back further. I don't know when the ten thousand gallon tank was converted, but it goes back prior to two thousand and nine. This application went to Division Aeronautics in two thousand and twelve. So, not to belabor this, but I want you to know that these are the documents, the FOIA documents, they're accurate, they were supplied to me by the county, and they show that the Edgar County Airport, Jimmy Wells declared there was only a thousand gallon fuel tank, and made other statements that are untrue. And I'm hoping that you folks will review this information, try to understand where we're coming from, and just bring this project to an end. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I just have one question on the fifth page of this document, where it says different size calculations for transient aircraft. If you look at number one, it says the calculations, the total annual operations for thirty-five aircraft, which we know there was not thirty-five aircraft. It says the number of operations per aircraft was two hundred and fifty per year at three hundred sixty-five days. I want to know how that number was derived. I believe it's too, I believe it's a very exaggerated figure, and I'd like to know how they came to that conclusion. I mean, if you looked at that, that's sixty-eight percent of the time, so...
I will ask our engineer came up with that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Just got a couple of quick questions. Augie, have we gotten any confirmation on the mass transit issue? You guys get to keep that, or do you know yet?
I do know that. Mark and legal people from Mass were corresponding, and Mark advised me or told me it was okay to give them the check, because the way that the money came in was all grant money. It just flowed through the counties to form the transportation center, and wasn't really our money. And so, between the, I'm a messenger, between the two, between our state's attorney and Rides Legal Department, there, they must've arrived at a conclusion that said, go ahead and give them the check, and, so I did.
Okay. I would encourage the county board members to put in writing a request for a statutory guideline that allowed them to take that action, because the statute is so crystal clear that money belongs to the county, no matter how it came in. And I'll use our fire department as an example. If I get grant money to purchase a fire truck, the minute that thing is purchased, it's the property of the fire protection district. When that truck goes through its life cycle, we can sell that truck at a given point, the money stays with, with the department. Even if we dissolve the fire protection district, that money stays in the district and can be distributed back to the taxpayers. That statute for the mass transit district, that Mr. Patrick was so adamant that we'd get rid of and get rid of now, is so crystal clear, I'm in shock that they decided to just give it away because of grant money.
How big a check was it?
Two hundred thousand. Two twenty. And it was, it was from East Central Illinois Mass Transit to Rides Mass Transit.
Now, it, when you look at the dissolution statute, I mean, anybody that's read it, it's very, very, very crystal clear how that is supposed to be done, and there's no language that says it gets turned back over to some other entity that took it over. Not at all. The only other question I have on another topic in regards to the OMA training, we did get a copy of Mr. Helsley's OMA training, it was completed May thirtieth. I'm just confused as to why it would have Dan Bruner's home address on it.
Yeah, I guess. I don't know. I checked, I don't know. I didn't get any answers, so...
That's all I got. Thank you.
I guess I did the OMA training for him, but no, I didn't. Swear on the fact of life.
I'm done.
Any other public comment? Any reports? Jeff, you want to go first?
Sure. The phone system bids are out. We have four companies that are interested, I talked to Ben about this the other day, and Ross, that they need more time. We went to the state's attorney, and you can clarify this, Augie, but we went to the state's attorney. He said as long as nothing's open, we have to advertise, and we're extending that bid time to seven, uh, seven twenty-nine, correct?
Seven thirty-one.
Seven thirty-one, sorry.
The last day of the month.
You mean July thirty?
July thirty-first.
Yeah, July thirty-first. And that way, we can get everybody to bid, and the company, I talked to Ross this morning, the company, the companies that knew about it early don't have any problem with it, they understand.
Well, I, I thought it was kind of, didn't have a lot of time for outside companies to get...
So, we're doing, going through the proper legal process to make sure that we can extend the bids, and that way, we, obviously, we want more folks to bid, so. As far as the farm leases, and I took to the state's attorney about this, we queried the, no, I'm trying to figure out how to say his name, can you help me, Carl, the guy from the state?
Malac-...
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 And we have been, we have ground that we are currently farming, based on what was, and now we have to adjust that. We're gonna lose about forty-six point five acres of farm ground for road crime, and we obviously can look at hay and some other products later. But we need, rather than being rushed into bidding it out, we have to physically send them a registered letter in the farmers, and the state's attorney and I and Charlie Carl will, will make sure that we have a letter that we can send out at the next meeting so that we can let them know that we're going to, what our intent is, that we're gonna have to take some acreage out of production, and so that we can set things up, give them proper notice so that we can bid it out in the next month or two. Yes, sir.
And that reason, that's because you can't see. Is that right?
Yeah, yeah. It has to do with, here, you can just have, it has to do with line of sight and...
Part of its line of sight.
And safety for operations at the airport.
So, it doesn't mean, so it means I have to, whoever farms has to put something, hay or beans or something like that?
We actually rent...
No, it's gotta be in grass.
Oh, okay.
So, we can possibly hay it, but for the time being, we need to shrink the bid down for the lease, for the, or the bid for the lease, to cover the ground that can be farmed. We need to let the farm, both farmers know what are, what we're doing.
It's two different farmers?
There's two, yeah, Brad Dyer and, uh...
Brad Tucker.
I'm sorry, Brad Tucker and Jared...
Basically, this is the line of sight.
Have they to have it surveyed or...
Oh, okay. And the area that's in grass is not the required amount, so we're gonna have to almost double it on all the runway area. And like Jeff said, forty-six acres is a lot. Yeah, that's potentially ninety thousand dollars less income.
Right.
Is that just a request, or is that just a, as a path to do?
It's a path to do.
Okay. For the safe operation.
So, and we gotta look at whether it's possibly, we could use it as grass, or grass or hay, possibly, if, you know, hay, then there could, we could maybe bid part of it out, you know, for hay ground, you know, we don't know the details on that yet.
So, if we're gonna lose the income, then we're gonna, we're gonna spend money mowing it, maintaining it.
Well, if we can't, we should be able to recoup some of it on hay.
Yeah.
Okay?
Hopefully.
So, I mean, it is what it is. I mean, we've gotta do the right thing.
As long as we gotta do it, then it is.
And we don't want some incident to happen that puts the taxpayers in harm's way.
Right, right.
So, the difference in that would be small price to pay to keep everything safe. You know, we've got other things, but I think that's, that's it for me right now.
Dan?
Andrew called last week. Ron has turned in his resignation as an assistant for animal shelter, so we're going through the process of putting an add in paper. She also says there's a couple people might be interested, but I told her go ahead and put an add in paper, so we'll do that this week, and just trying to check on the procedure how it should be done. Ben mentioned that maybe I should, she should come to you and explain, so. She's supposed to bounce this morning, and I'll get the real information, so. Other than that?
We're doing fine. Want to share about the health?
Yeah, health department's got a problem with the back northeast corner, it's been leaking for quite a while. I ran about two hours the other day trying to find out who owned this building.
They did. We own it, they paid for it.
But there was no paper trail. Assessor's office didn't know who owned it, Ali Smith didn't know who owned it, Augie wasn't sure who owned it, so Ben said the county owns it.
The county owns it, but the health department paid for it.
Right. They ran it out, I didn't realize that, too, to underall agency. I went to Jared out at the Reese's, and he said he doesn't mess with it because it's, he would have to pay curvally wage, and he couldn't make any money off it. So, Morgan was out there at the same time, and Morgan was a contractor, and I wrote a few years ago, so I asked him to look at it, and I hope he went by, I think probably even to look at it, give us some idea what it's gonna cost. There is a door that's in, needs to be replaced, Jared said they would do that, it's a door that's rusted out on the backside. And you gave me two or three names also, so.
Tom Griffin.
I'll refer to that, so, we'll go and ask him. My main concern was who's gonna pay for it, and I guess they, Janet said they do have a maintenance fee, or where they can actually pay for the maintenance on the buildings.
Have you got a ballpark, Dan?
No, that's what I'm trying to do, is get a figure on it, so, I have no idea what it would cost. Flat roof, uh...
I thought it was just, it hadn't been put on that long ago.
I don't know. She showed me the EPC work, it's coming through the ceiling dial, you saw him, too, he's, he's out there, too, so, so we'll get it done eventually.
I guess the question of wording of maintenance, I mean, maintenance to me doesn't mean you get to pay for the roof, but if they have the money in the budget, despite the maintenance. Where you draw a line, you know, fix the doors one day.
And is this a storm damage, or...
No, I don't think so. I think it's been that way for quite a while.
Typical flat roof.
Yeah, it's a flat roof. Better than if I was leaking pretty badly, then you'd do something.
Before my time, wasn't that an issue with the insurance company and all that? Did that all get resolved?
That's what I, they paid the, I think, twenty-seven thousand, and the roof was put on, and that's hasn't...
Through the insurance?
Insurance, right.
Was that the whole, were you just...
Oh, no, no, sure, I think they was gonna do the whole thing, but I'm not sure.
This is just one area, I can't really find it.
Well, they'd look at it, wouldn't they?
Well, I mean, you got your paperwork, when the roof was put on.
Well, you'd certainly think they would, but that was the health department that done it, that done, took care of the work, it was the county's insurance that pays for it.
Kind of hard for, we did have hailstorms, and maybe you said, had damages, but not, flat roofs kind of hard to prove if it's a, what we call the type, it's just late.
Yeah, depends, somebody needs to be, look, go up and see what the damage is.
Well, that's, Morgan was supposed to, I'll call him and see if he looked at it. I think you were on to check the cursing on canvas, too.
I got a hold of the guy, we were talking.
We had two or three bids.
Janet already talked about twelve people.
Yeah, nine wanted to do it.
Remaining wage.
Did she even say whether or not she checked with, with insurance on there?
She didn't say that, no.
You know, because if you're actually gonna try to get some sort of settlement from them, she probably needs to make sure the insurance people know, and then they're gonna send their people up there to have a look at it and see if it's justified, if it might be a cheap way to get it, that's it. They're either gonna say, yeah, we're gonna give you something, or they're gonna say, no, we're not.
I missed it, sir, but I just checked.
And if...
It's just not, you know, it'll work on. Hold that rain twenty-nine.
How long's it been?
Quite a while, according to hers.
That's Saturday, we better start worrying.
At least you're better not, I got fifteen acres, I hate to go.
I got it.
This is just an idea, but when you have a leak in your roof, you ought to get fixed then.
Yeah, I agree. But we didn't know about it till Wednesday morning.
Oh, you guys didn't?
We didn't know about it, no.
Right, but some, but they did.
Yeah, she did, oh, yeah, she did.
Well, if the county owns it, isn't that, does the building committee have to be...
It's, it's never been brought, it's been...
The building committee hasn't, building committee hasn't had anything to do with the health department or the highway department. That's in past procedure. They took care of all their stuff on their own.
Nothing's been put, but some of it's...
Okay.
Thousand dollars for that.
Okay, I didn't know what to rule for.
Right. I don't know if there's any rules.
I think she says they have the money to fix it, whether they want to just, through the insurance company and try it, which would be a good idea, according to hers, she has enough money to fix the roof. Morgan was gonna say if they could patch it rather than replace it, that might be a possibility, too. I'll get off on it, eventually.
Everything else?
What with the maid?
Carl?
Anything on Mills?
Yes, I've talked to him a couple of times, he is moving in. Yes, and he asked that the structure be secured from now on, he's gonna come in this week and secure it with his own locks and so forth. Tom, Jim Bennett was there this morning and started working on the electrical changeover. Trying to think, we need to decide, we need to have a combination meeting of airport and, and finance committee for several reasons, and we need to decide about the storage facility in the shop and other things, okay?
We need to get Ross up there on the cameras.
Okay, yes.
And, you know, he can get, somehow coordinate with Mills, so, see where the cameras need to be placed.
Right. Right.
Nothing else on the airport, I don't have anything else other than that.
No, I've talked to several members of the previous airport committee this morning. There is a, a certain amount of interest with one of them.
You mean the advisory committee?
Yes.
Okay.
There is a, he was gonna let me know in a day or two what he thought, as long as somebody else doesn't talk him out of it.
Right.
Which almost happened before my very eyes while I was doing it. But...
What are you gonna do, the interview?
Yes, that was the other thing.
Uh, well...
I can do all this with one thing.
How many do you have to interview, Carl?
Just two. We were gonna do it last Tuesday.
I was out of town, so...
Oh, that's right, okay.
And Jeff went there, and I wanted to make sure he was there to do the interview.
He's crucial, he's crucial, he has to be.
I told him I was not, but there was nobody that's indispensable.
But all three members need to be there to do it, so, we'll have to get our schedules together. I'm waiting for Jeff. Sheriff's meeting.
Yes, that's what...
We, we had that scheduled, we were planning on doing it last Friday at one o'clock, and Jeff called me up Wednesday morning and said the sheriff was unavailable for the meeting.
What I suggest is we may have a phone conference during our exact session with the state's attorney. We need to get the time, he's gonna be back, the sheriff's back in town, and we need to coordinate that maybe this morning, so that we can come up with an early time. I mean, if that's acceptable with you, Carl.
Yes. So, we wanna get it as soon as possible, but we gotta coordinate everybody's schedules.
Right. And vacations are causing problems, and a new, depending on what we wanted to talk about this morning, that, and he wanted to be available to us, so we can talk to him over that phone if we need to, okay?
That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, before, one other thing, on, on budget, and we'll put that on the agenda, too. Don is starting to prepare the work papers now that he's got the, the bills out, and I guess everybody's been blessed by getting their property tax bills, but at any rate, now that he is clear of that, we'll start the budget process, and the committee will address that also on the agenda when they move. That's it.
Alan?
Just kind of a further update on our health insurance, the next thing coming up on the, which is basically today, the proposal specifications were to be provided to the agents, a lot of good information going back and forth between, it looks like, especially Billy and up at the county clerk's office, and Bushu, as far as trying to get information of what people, what the health insurance primary information they're getting back and forth.
Do we send, Alan, do you, not Derek, do we send out like a questionnaire to all employees and ask them that they, they fill out, like, that their histories?
Yeah, right now, there's what's called a standardized form for that, and I'll maybe jump in on this as much as I do. It's a standardized form now, it used to be every insurance company had their own thing you had to fill out, so if you had four different companies bidding, you could possibly have four different insurance company forms you had to fill out ahead of time. What we're trying to do this year is get that information out to our employees ahead of time, so that we can get the best possible bid. It's a standardized form now. And also the, our health savings account plans, which is basically regulated by the federal government, they've also set already for two thousand fifteen, the hired after the health plan changes, too, so people will know that ahead of time.
Is there any wellness programs in the foreseeable future for somebody our size?
You know, I don't know. I think all those, all those insurance companies, they do, they, they do a lot of talking about that, but if we were gonna have some sort of a, a health and wellness program, that would be something that the county would have to bear, you know, and so then you get into, yeah, is that worth the idea, will it actually make your insurance rates go down based on whatever else?
Right, right.
I, I don't know.
Okay, I hope this is a quick...
No, it's a good question, because a lot of, a lot of huge companies, a lot of smaller companies even do that, too, you know, they, whether they're providing gym facilities or paying a certain part of, at the rec or Tom Dolan or whatever, you know, if they go in and actually utilize it.
Or just doing a buy, buy yearly health screen free, you know, having the employee can, make blood pressure and, and that kind of thing.
Within, I forget, what is the payout, there's something on one of the programs that we provide, if they have the yearly health screen, a certain amount of that is taken care of. So, a part of that's kind of built into those, yeah, it's built...
That's what I thought I...
Speechless, right? Fighting this for three weeks, yeah.
You're even seen a check.
Yeah.
All those damn three packs of days.
Yeah, yeah.
Couple of down filters, catching up with them.
Yeah, but, you know, all good questions, but I don't know, that's about all I have.
Can I follow up?
Yes, absolutely.
If you'd like. We got an email late Friday, which we opened up this morning, from Bushu, we only have two bidders that have replied to the ads, so, one's our local, and the other one is out of Terre Haute. That's just the email, first of all.
One of the things that they talked about, even when we... Yes. One of the things that they talked about, because of the way the health insurance programs are going so much, that it's so centralized, the special Affordable Care Act going now, is that, I think you're gonna see more and more of that, because it's, it's kind of like, only the big boys can survive, and it's pretty well formatted on what exactly is gonna happen, so, the day and age of getting seven different companies or six different companies to bid on your health insurance are probably gone.
You know, there's a lot of them that just quit, insurance companies just quit health insurance altogether.
There's just, and, you know, hopefully, that, I don't know whether that's good, bad, or different for competition, or whether it's better because they all have to meet certain qualifications down, you have to do certain things, so...
When you say two companies are bidding, they could actually have, or two that have asked, they could actually have more than one that they're bidding, each one of them, right? Like Diamond Brothers could be bidding three.
Two agencies, let me clarify.
Yeah, two agencies.
They could have multiple carriers.
Anyway, our insurance proposals are due to Edgar County on the twenty, twenty-ninth of July, proposal opening, so...
Did you get a correct number on the full-time employees?
I'd have any idea on that. I don't know, Augie did have any?
Well, that changes all.
That depending on where you're at, is what you're saying, whether or not...
Well, they told us we got ninety, and I questioned that number.
Yeah, well, it wasn't ninety.
It wasn't ninety, it was, it was less than that.
That's what question told us at the meeting.
Because that's, that's where the things they've been going back and forth on is, trying to fill out how many people work so many hours back and forth, so that'd be something, maybe... So that'd be something, maybe Billian does that.
Off the top of my head, no, but I believe it, Billian knows, yeah, it's less than what they said.
See, the big issue there was they had four weeks of in, or information.
Right.
And what Bushi was doing with some of them was adding four weeks as a two-week payment, it angry, so that's, stuff happens.
Well, not of that, in order to get that, that's why one of the things we tried to get this started, was that, so you build even four months.
A correct picture.
You know, a four or five months over how many people you actually have, because, you know, like whenever you have even people who are working normally, less hours than normal, if you project that over a month, and that's all of a sudden their big hours, they go to multiple full-time people, it's not part-time people all life. Yeah, I mean, you, that's why you wanna project that, and that's why we wanna get as much information as we could have, as we could in four or five months, so that we're not just saying, oh, Mike's not really a full-time person, but for that month, and he's the one who charged it, wow, we've got him for forty-eight hours a week. Well, that's, that's a lot.
We're talking about substantial money?
Well, it, it does, because it throws you to a different jump, yeah.
Your prevailing wage, I know, no.
I voted for it, yeah.
Well, the problem is that we actually had ninety full-time, the part-time could get us over a hundred, and we don't wanna go over a hundred.
Well, and I think that also goes to case of, like, we're talking about building our budgets and stuff, and if we are hiring people, as we talked about before, and we're starting to hire people to replace people, and we're hiring them for over thirty hours, yeah, that's gonna happen. Or we're gonna hire them for thirty hours, and then miraculously they keep showing up at thirty-two hours. There's the answer to your question, Dale, that's how you get ninety people.
I don't think it's good for the country, though, if we hire everybody that you can part-time.
I, I'm just saying, here's, here's the, I'm not, I'm not even making that, that thing, Mike, I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying, if you wanna see, keep track of these hours here, whenever, even if you say you're hiring somebody for thirty, and you push them to thirty-two or thirty-five, because, you know, our, our full-time employees work thirty-five hours a week. Okay, so you push that less than thirty to thirty-two, all of a sudden, that makes them up there.
We got, then we got eligibility, I, what, what. Hire people to go along with Obamacare now, that's, I mean, that dictates to us as a, as an entity, as a, as an employer, hell, we, we can't do this, we can't do that, 'cause our insurance rates might, might go up, and that deserts me that we have to, that we have to pay attention to that, we can't get the best people for the best jobs for the best money. 'Cause insurance has got a factor in them.
Well, if we don't know where we're at, it's gonna be difficult to make a decision. If we know where we're at, then we can make those decisions that benefit the taxpayers, the job's getting done, and we can do it fairly. And that's.
And I think that's the track that we're on, is trying to find out exactly how many people we have and how many hours they're working, as a back of the original question.
You ready, Neil?
No, I don't, I, on the claims part, I'm guessing that we're gonna be talking about that later on, as far as pending litigation and stuff like that, or not, or somebody else talking about this?
Yes.
Okay. As the old claim, it said, division judiciary person, I got some questions on that.
Anybody else have anything?
Uh, that form we got in there, was that for the insurance part?
Yes.
I don't know what form you got, Dan.
The one that's sent out?
Probably.
Yeah, okay.
Who guesses, if they ask about it?
Like two-page form or something.
Have they stand on all the standardized forms to all the people who get insurance, you know?
Yeah, all of those have been sent out.
Yeah, that's what it's.
Okay.
Yes. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, Dale Barkley wanted to let you folks know that he met with Hanson's and the state Malacic a couple weeks ago on pre-engineering, everything went well. Everybody got their directions, is on the same page, so everything is proceeding according to plans, and one for me. Okay. Nine-one-one. We told him that we'd work on that, but.
We can't really do anything until we meet with the sheriff. You know, that's, and I talked to Troy over the weekend, and told him that, you know, we would be setting up another meeting to, you know, we're not forgiving it, but we're, and he said, fine. And I would be back with him after we have the meeting with the sheriff. I've talked with the city administration, referenced nine-one-one, and they are interested in talking. And, you know, in the past, there's been, I know at least a couple different times that we've talked with the city in the past over several years about that, and, and I think a lot of, they, they're aware of everything, so, but they're, they feel like they're interested in just sitting down and talking, have some communication on it. And I told him after the meeting with the sheriff that we would get with them, and go from there.
You, you recommend the committee for that, or?
Not, not at this point, we'll wait.
See what, what.
Have to talk with the sheriff, yes.
We do have a vacancy to fill on nine-one-one, right? So we need to.
Yeah, and there's a resignation, two resignations actually, one from Ron Humphrey and the other one from Dee Bergen.
Anything else?
How do we fill that, is that a full board decision?
Yes.
Who, who brings, who brings a recommendation? Is it Carl's the only nine-one-one member that I know of on the, on the county board, did that?
I think I make the recommendation, and the board approves it or doesn't approve it.
Okay.
So, there.
Right.
I think that's a great, a, a great idea.
Anything else come this meeting? We have a need for a closed session?
Yes.
Does, Augie have anything before we go into closed session, if we go in?
Yeah, in addition to the things we just talked about, Kathy Rhodes, who is our new chamber director, called me last week, and the week, for the weekend, July eleventh and twelve, I understand that Paris Baseball is, well, our town is hosting the state Bay Bridge tournament.
I'll see that in the paper.
Yeah, and they, they're trying to tie all this in with bringing folks to downtown and to utilize Paris and whatnot. So on Saturday, the twelfth, what they're hoping to do is expand the farmer's market. And she was asking for permission to use more of the north lawn, and I said, well, that normally rests with the sheriff and the board, and, but she needed to talk with vendors now so they could plan to come, and basically she explained they're just gonna expand the farmer's market type thing.
On the north side of the square?
North side of the square, where the farmer's market on Saturday morning, so.
The, the north side of the yard in the courthouse?
Yes. Yeah, now.
We already approved using that, right, so what's she gonna do?
What is she gonna do, she's gonna wait to hear from me what you folks have to say, what you thought about, I said, about using more of the space. I don't, honestly don't know on Saturday mornings if we have anybody up on the lawn, is anybody north?
I haven't seen up there.
For a farmer's market?
Yes.
I haven't seen anybody up there, they're just on the.
Already have, sir.
And that takes me here for?
They're just on the, on the street, on the north side of the street, like, parking, parking, like, if you park in on the north side, courthouse, that's where they, they set up all their, that's, the only hand question is.
Stand out in the street.
We gave permission basically to Farm Bureau. Didn't we?
Yes, yes, to do that.
I'm wondering, I hope they're kinda in cahoots if, if they do that, so that they're not.
Well, that's what she said she was working with, Chris Book, yeah, at the Farm Bureau, 'cause she knew that they were out there. She not, she doesn't expect a, a large turnout, because this is new and it's happened so quick. But she said if we continue to host this in subsequent years, there would be more time to do more planning to try to really make it a big deal to draw people downtown during Friday and Saturday.
So like there weren't more ad vendors or something, and maybe utilize the yard?
And maybe utilize the yard, yes.
Well, that sounds good to me.
I mean, this time, she said we might be talking maybe eight to ten, if we're lucky, smaller vendors just to come in in addition to the farmer's market, there may be some, but like she said, it is, there will be some, as I understand it, some food type, not produce, what I'm trying to say. So, it, it didn't sound like a problem to me, but I wanted to let you know that, that there.
If the building and grounds committee would get together with the sheriff, and they both okay, aren't they a problem at all?
And you mentioned you got the two resignation, the two resignations that we received, and talked about the health insurance.
That's it?
I think so, yeah.
You said we need exactly the same.
Don't we? Yeah, Michael?
Yes.
I'll, Andrew got this right, and I'll look at that, we'll put a paper, and we'll have to sign it.
Well, I would entertain that motion, Dan.
I second.
Well, what are we going in for?
Pending litigation, it'd have to be.
Let's go, yes, that's what I think.
I think the only thing we need to talk about is pending litigation.
But, yes, I think, Mr. Chairman, and I don't know if that's been a formal motion or not, but I'd like to go in for a closed session to discuss pending litigation, for one thing.
I second.
There's other things, but.
You say there's other things, but you have to put that into here?
Well, if you're gonna, whatever you're gonna talk about, that's what you're supposed to put into your motion, and it can be one of like twelve different things, we just need to get them better.
What, do you wanna add compensation to it?
Well, if we're gonna talk about employment and compensation, yes. And I don't, I mean, a part of, part of the way we work is tough to know what everybody else is thinking, and what, they're all different committees, so I don't, I, I don't.
Well, I definitely think you gotta put compensation in there, because that's tied into the litigation.
Okay, well, then it's also then, let's have a closed session to discuss possible employment and compensation and pending litigation.
I think that's fair, I think that covers, and then I second that, please.
We have a motion second going, executive session to discuss employment compensation and pending litigation. All those in favor, but use your sign.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, which is carried.